Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Pandora. Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Councilmember Vaccaro. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Council, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Bertoni.
Here.
And Mayor Moy.
Here.
Thank you. And tonight, our invocation will be by worship Pastor Pamela Gore of City Church. Thank you.
Oh, it was already on. Good evening, everybody. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we just thank you for this meeting of great minds tonight. We ask that your wisdom would just fill each and every mind that needs to make decisions tonight. We thank you for doing that, and we ask for unity here. Let us come together. We've got so much going on around us where nobody can come together. Let unity happen in a great way tonight. And Father, let it be to the fruitfulness in a way that blesses the people of this precious community called Fairfield. We just thank you for all that you're doing tonight, in your son Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And Vice Mayor Bertoni, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. Please join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we're gonna go ahead and do council reports. Vice Mayor, could we start with you today?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming and taking your time to join us this evening. I just want to say, number one, that I was very privileged to attend the State of the Base event out at Travis Air Force Base with Mayor Moy and my colleague Scott Tonison. And it is just always a fantastic annual event highlighting the fabulous work that Travis does. They are bar none, the best. And so, you know, as we move forward, I just want to say, and I know I speak for my colleagues, that we support Travis Air Force Base and the fantastic work that they do all throughout the year, making sure that they're defending our freedom and they're helping people in other parts of the world have a good quality of life as well. So Travis Air Force Base is just amazing, and we need to make sure that we continue to support them. They most certainly deserve it. And I just want to remind everyone that on this coming up Saturday, February 25th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., we will be having a Black History Month event at Bethel Community Church. That's at 600 East Tabor, where Pastor Anthony Gilmore is the senior pastor. And we will have food trucks, we will have live events. This is a, this is an event that is sponsored by the Clergy Action Network, or Fairfield Can, and the Solano County Black Chamber of Commerce. It is going to be a great event. We're looking for a big crowd, so please join us at that. And the Clergy Action Network, or Fairfield Can, will have our meeting this month on Tuesday, the 28th of February, at 3:00 p.m., right here in council chambers. And I would just love to invite the mayor and my colleagues, if you're able to attend, please do so. The more, the merrier. And we have some events coming up that I'd love to have us be a part of. So if you can make the Clergy Action Network meeting, that would be superb. And the last thing I'll say is that the smoke shop that this city council unanimously voted to de-license about a month ago, they're going strong. They're still doing business in the city robustly. So what I'm gonna ask is that we re-agendize that, if that is legally and procedurally okay, to talk about what our options are for expediting the closure of that facility, because this city council has spoken, and we've spoken unanimously. So they need to shut it down, and they don't look like they're in any way, shape, or form even getting close to doing that. So Attorney Lem, I see you getting ready to get on the mic, so let me know if it would be appropriate for us to re-agendize that, so that you can discuss with us what our options might be moving forward to expedite the closure of that facility.
Sure, and I can talk to you offline, because there is some pending litigation.
Oh.
So I'll talk to you offline, either after this meeting or when we have an appropriate time to chat.
Okay, so is it appropriate for, for us to agendize this?
I sent all council a confidential attorney-client email with an update, and so I'll talk to you offline. But I don't think it's appropriate to agendize it if we're a public meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's my report. Thank you.
Councilman Carr, what are you doing way down there, bro?
Well, just breaking it up a little bit.
Alright, I thought, yeah, okay.
I'm just saying, Mayor, and I would like to thank everyone for giving your time, and I hope that's a good one.
And I hope everyone had a nice weekend, nice long weekend. Well, first up, Wednesday, I was able to attend the Good Character Youth Awards with Mayor Moy and Councilwoman Kate Patrice, along with many other city personnel and Susun City Government as well. And it was so nice to see that event. My favorite qualities in a person is one of these, that these young people were being presented, the awards that were being presented. And, and it was, and my favorite things, good character, integrity, accountability. As a past director of a program, I ran a business, and in trying to hire personnel, I found that firsthand, these are qualities that aren't so, they're not so common. And so to see these 20 people get awards for it was, was just very pleasing. It was, it was really nice to see their families there rooting them on. And it was a real put-together event by the Rotary, and it was just, it was just really nice to see that. And on Friday, I attended the Communities of Recovery Conference and, at the County Event Center. And just to keep my tools sharp on some of the processes I wish to take with the, with the homeless projects and stuff like that, it was really good to see the doctors and some of the ongoing things that they got put together for that. And then, let's see, what else did I do? On Saturday, I did attend the Fairfield Police Officers Association Crab Feed. It was so good, and the money that was raised going to such a good cause benefiting the Fairfield-Susun Safety Academy. After that, I went to the Downtown Theater and saw the House of Floyd tribute that they had. And I have to tell you guys that if you haven't been to the theater and seen some of these shows that are being put together, it's just awesome. It was just such a good, good thing to see. And I wanted to say, just getting out again after this long pandemic, being locked up and isolated, as a counselor, a student of psychology, it's just, it's just not good to get used to always being isolated. And we do need to get back out as a community, get together and do events. And I'm really gonna push for a lot more events, just for our own health, all-around good health. I think that's about all I got. I just, again, I can't push, push it enough that it is a fundamental need for us to have fun, and I will be pushing, like I said, for more events, for more venues. At our, at our gathering that we had, our retreat, that was one of the top products, was quality of life.
Yes.
I definitely feel that, so much better that I just got out this weekend, that we gotta really push that. The COVID stuff is behind us now. Let's just move on with getting back together. Skip the drive-throughs, go into the restaurants. Let's, let's get back out into our community and amongst each other. Thank you. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Tonison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. So Councilmember Carr and I, he got to go on a ride-along with me this weekend. And we went by Allen Witt, and they are, so to date myself a little bit, I played on Allen Witt ballfields in 1970 to '73, so they've changed a bit, but they went into a bit of disarray. And just recently, there's been a new group that has taken over. I don't know if they're a new group, but it's the Pacific Little League. And they're doing a fantastic job. They've redone the dugouts, they've, they've re-clayed the fields. They're, they're, it's, it's really looking sharp, and they're gonna be opening in early March, March, early March. I know myself and Councilmember Carr will be out there, but just to shout out to, is it, was it Vince?
Francisco.
Fran, just shout out to Francisco, Doug's neighbor. We walked up and they were out there working on the field, and Doug's like, hey, you're my neighbor. So getting, getting out is good. I'm with Councilman Carr on that. We had a meeting recently. We're bringing restrooms to Lee Bell Park. I know there's pros and cons about that. I'm sure we're probably gonna have a couple more meetings with the public, and hopefully a few more people show up. But the, I've been pressing for bathrooms, I think we all have, for restrooms since, since I got on council two years ago. So though, they're, they're coming. We, we have some big events there, and there's, you know, 100, 150 kids there, and it just feels like it's the right thing to, to have the restrooms. And that, and that's all for me. I'll, I'll, I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I wanted to thank the staff for a beautiful ceremony of lights for Maureen Bates last month. It was really, really beautiful, well put together, and I really was able to see the power of the mod team and how they put together graphics and how to get people out to events. That was wonderful. But my, rest of my report, I wanted to kind of do a very quick, well, I realized today, today's, I think, the 60-day mark of being on city council. And so I have to tell you, it has been an amazing experience of learning, of meeting people, and of what I thought city council was, was going to be, yes, is, is very different. And a lot of it is the time management and prepping for meetings like this. I like to show our binder, so what it takes to prepare for these meetings, and also board meetings that were on, other boards that were on. So I was appointed to, with the mayor's, the mayor appoints us, and I was appointed to the Solano Open Space Commission, the, as a second alternative, at the Fairfield-Susun Sewer Board, the MCE, which is the Marin Clean Energy Commission, and also Solano Transportation Authority. I'm an alternate, but I'm on the Subcommittee of the Active Transportation Committee. So just managing all that has been interesting, but the learning in it is pretty amazing. Also, and I think the city has a really great onboarding process. So part of what that is, is I think I have 24, what they call, open city tours between this year and early next year. And so what that means is we get to meet all, we get to go to all the different departments, talk to different department heads, and so that has been so thrilling. My first one was with IT and Savita Chandray, and it was pretty amazing. She gave me a whole presentation and taught me about their help desk and their infrastructure and all that stuff. It was amazing, and I got a mousepad where, where, where I learned about making your, your password stronger. But just, I can't even say how thrilling it is to be able to go into these different departments and really see the power of the city of Fairfield, and how amazing staff is. This is staff that cares. They care about their jobs, and it's, it's just, it's just a lot of fun. Also, in the last 60 days, we did a two-day city council retreat, and that was pretty amazing. We got to talk about these priorities that the city council really cares about, housing and homelessness, and city finance, and quality of life, and really get into some vigorous conversation. And also, the community there was there, the city was there. We got to just get all this input and be on this one accord and, and discussion, and that was pretty thrilling. The League of Cities Retreat, I know that Councilmember Doug Carr talked about it the last time, but Councilmember Doug Carr, City Manager David Gassaway, Mayor Kat Moy, and I, we went to this three-day retreat where we learned all this cool stuff about city council and being new at our position. Of course, Mayor Kat Moy is not new, but she's a new mayor, and I thought that was really great learning for the first, you know, 60 days. And finally, I make sure I put my And finally, I make sure I put my email everywhere, so, and you all actually email me. So I learned that way too, because you email me about everything from trash that is dropped off in District One in weird places, to water concerns, just anything you're worried about, you email me, and I love it, because I just hit the forward button to city staff, and they take care of it, and loop us all in. So it's just been an amazing 60 days, and I just want to thank each and every one of you for just being where you are and being here. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, that was a great report. I am not going to, my colleagues covered us pretty well. We have all been really, really busy working for the citizens here, and I appreciate each and every one of you, and also Councilman Vaccaro, of course, and Councilwoman Pandora, excuse me. I'm just going to report one thing, and that is, we, the Vice Mayor and I, along with our colleagues, are going to start our citywide listening tour. The date is going to be, the first one is going to be March 25th, and it'll begin at 11 o'clock in Bethel Church, and we'll be getting a lot more of this information out, so I just wanted to let people know that we are starting on it. And we are simply going to go out and listen to you. We're going to talk with each of our colleagues in each district about things that they want to talk about that day as well, what they've done, or what they plan to do, and this is going to be a real chance for us just to really listen. I mean, I've been here my whole life, and one of the things that I really enjoyed when I was campaigning was going to people's homes, and they would invite friends, neighbors over, and they would, I would listen to them, and that was it, and answer the questions. And that's what we want to do here, and so it'll be once a month, and it, so it'll be, you know, six, seven months from now, we'll be done. And I look forward to being out there, and I hope you all will show up and, and talk with us. So I'm really, really looking forward to it, being back out there and not campaigning. Yes, that part. So Mr. City Manager, your report?
Madam Mayor, can I respond to the listening tour comments?
Absolutely.
So we, we wanted to talk about agendizing a discussion.
I've done that, I, I, I'm sorry, I should have told you.
Okay, because that's something we really talked about, are you going to do that in open session?
That's right, yeah. I, I, Kate Patrice, I don't know who you're talking about, "we," but Kate Patrice contacted me and said that, that she wanted to have it agendized, and like I've told everybody, if you have something that you want to agenda, just tell me. So we put it on there.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be nice to get some information on it.
On what?
On your listening tour. All I've done is heard, heard what I've seen, I've never, you know, we've never sat down and had a direct conversation about it. You know, I don't, I don't know when you're coming into my district, I don't know what you're talking about, I don't know what the budget is, so again, I'm probably going on, but if we can agendize that and have a discussion in open session, I'd love to have that opportunity, preferably before the first meeting.
Councilman Tonison, it's agendized, and we'll discuss it, and like I said, the Vice Mayor and I intend to talk to everybody well before we go out, you know, as we get closer to it, to talk about what you, when I talked to you, you said you didn't even know you'd be there, so I, I get it.
When we initially heard it, we, nobody heard it, you know, it was just you guys talked about it, and it didn't involve us, so I just, you know, like more involvement, and again, I don't know what it's going to cost, I don't know what the fees, you know, who's going to, is there going to be staff there, is there going to be overtime, is there going to be police and fire?
Well, we'll discuss all that.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know before we start.
Yeah, at the mayor's request, that was added to the March 7th agenda today.
Is there anybody else that wanted to say anything about that? He said "we" want to, so I don't know who he's talking about, because I only heard from Kate Patrice.
I just would like to have a little bit of advance notice when you will be, we will be hooking up. I was notified that we are going with the site at the Mankas Park.
Yes.
And just the dates, all that would be great.
Yeah, we'll get that done.
And David, you said it's on March 7th?
Yes, sir.
And when is the first, it's called the Listening Tour? When is that?
I just announced it.
I wasn't listening.
I know that. Yeah, on the 25th, again, it's starting at 11 o'clock at Bethel Church.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and just, I would just like to say on the, the Listening Tour as well, that this is really not about, this is really not about us, this is just about, it's about you, it's about the community, it's about coming out and listening, there is no specific agenda, there is no ulterior motive or anything like that, this is just something that the new mayor thought would be a good idea, and I agreed with her. We should have rolled it out differently, and you guys are going to be getting the information, like, I don't even know when mine is, actually. But, so it's, so this is just about us being out in the community, listening to our residents, and hopefully finding ways to work together to be responsive. So that's what this is all about, and I'm sure that I'll get notice of when mine is as well, and what the venue is, but you know, I just appreciate the opportunity to be out in the community, listening to the people who put us up here to work together, and I look at it as that as well, as an opportunity for us to work together to help each other, you know, in what we're doing in our districts, and what we're doing for the city. So that's really what it's all about, and it's about listening, it's about love, it's about respect, it's about engagement, it's about upping our community engagement, so that's why I'm looking forward to it, and I think it'll be, I think it'll be a wonderful way for us to just continue to build relationships among ourselves, especially with new council people on the dais as well, and with our seasoned people on the dais as well, to continue to just build relations, relationships together, work together, and increase our community engagement. So, and I'm looking forward to it, so I think it'll be fun, I think we'll enjoy it.
I think my rub is just building a relationship between us two, you know, we're, we're finding out, we're finding out about this late. Let's, let's just say to me, I'm finding out, out about this late, and it's frustrating when, you know, we're a weak mayor form of government, so we all have the same voting ability, we all have the same strengths, we all have, we don't answer to each other, so it, it feels like you guys are saying, hey, here's the Listening Tour, and here's the date that it's coming in your, in your district, and you can be there if you, you know, it sounds like you scheduled it without really talking with us first, or certainly, certainly with me, I know you brought mine up first, so, yeah, I can't wait for the agenda item to be discussed in the open.
Well, yeah, I've talked to you a couple times, Scott, so I, I think you're, you know, so.
Do we want to continue this, or we want to end this until the 7th?
We're going to wait until the 7th, when it's agendized properly, and watch violations of the Brown Act, thank you.
What, what was the Brown Act?
To make sure that we are not violating the Brown Act by talking to too many people.
Mr. City Attorney, would discussing Listening Tours or Town Halls, is that a Brown Act violation?
You know, this is the time for council to make comments to the public about things that are going on in their districts, or things that they want to highlight for their community. I would recommend, if you're going to have a larger discussion about policy or community events, that it has been agendized, I think the safer course would be to wait until March 7th, when it's been agendized. All right, City Manager Report. So as council was well aware, two weeks ago, has been mentioned by a couple of you, we had the city council retreat last week, your senior leadership team, which represents all of the executives within the city, we had a retreat as well, we utilized Jeanette, the facilitator that you all got to know a little bit over the weekend retreat, she helped us to really work through all of those items, and the, and kind of the big-picture goals and objectives that were identified by council, and I think through lots of work, very tiring work, we have a very good work plan, we'll be bringing that back to you all at a study session on Tuesday, March 14th. And so one of the changes that was made with city council last year was we added the second Tuesday of each month as kind of a standing hold for study session items. So on March 14th, we will, we will present back the work plan for city council goals, along with, there will be some policy discussions in building the new budget document, so some conversation to come on that. The other thing, just because I know our two city council members that are the representatives on the Capsolano JPA Board are both not with us here this evening, they have their next regular board meeting this Thursday evening, 6:30 PM, February the 23rd, at the County Administrative Building, those are open to the public, and that's where regionally, all of the agencies are coming together to try to better coordinate homeless response and service delivery. So the public is encouraged to attend those meetings, and that is my report, Madam Mayor.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
There is not.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney, any report?
I have nothing to report at a closed session, thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, your report?
I just want to let people know to please apply for Youth Commission, we still have several seats open, we are doing a rolling interviews, so, I mean, or quarterly interviews, so the next one is, applications due at March 21st, and interviews will happen around April 11th or so, so currently, we still have around five seats open, so I just want to encourage all the young folks to apply, it's really great. Actually, tonight, I'm going to be congratulating three that just got interview, and they're going to be admitted to be part of the Youth Commission, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we're going to turn to public comments, Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place a matter on a future agenda. To stay on an agenda item, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press *9 on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. And we do have a few, my first speaker, or speakers, is actually Mike Wright and Stephanie, Stephanie Perry.
Greetings, Madam Mayor and Council, and first thing on the agenda, I want to congratulate all the people that were newly elected and the people returning. I love the fact we got a great police chief on board, so just to, I want to let everyone know that I've been living in the city now for 60 years, so I've been around a few times, but I'm also a six-year person on the Mental Health Advisory Board for Solano County, and I have a passion for, for that as well. But tonight, I'm here to speak to everybody on the Solano County Civil Grand Jury, not the criminal grand jury, but the civil grand jury, and my associate member Stephanie is here with me. And February is designated as Civil Grand Jury Month, and what is the Civil Grand Jury? Basically, we devote our hours and time and attention to the city, the county, the school district, the special districts, administration, governance, efficiency, understanding of taxpayer expenditures, and public office holder and entity integrity. Every year, 50 counties statewide investigate and report on the operations of local governments with the county, a process called the watchdog function, and basically, we shine a light on what local government entities are doing, and how well they are doing or not doing. So it's a positive or, you know, just a transparent thing. We're here tonight to let everybody know that the grand jury is recruiting new members for the 23-24 season, which we're taking applications now, and we'll have a new jury selected in July. So we wanted to come down and let everybody know, I've put some applications, and we also entertain complaints, and everything that you or a person decides to complain about is totally confidential and not shared, and the same thing when we release a grand jury report, we say that staff was involved, we don't mention any names, things of that nature. So when we come knocking, don't be afraid, we're just looking. More specifics are available online and in the lobby as well, and I just wanted to thank everybody for their time, if you have any questions, you can certainly call us or ask us. I can say that this is my first term as a grand juror, and I'm absolutely loving it. The things that we investigate are really educational and stuff, so Stephanie, if you have anything else to share?
Okay, my name is Stephanie Perry, I'm from the city of Susun, and I represent Susun on the grand jury. We have applicants, we're looking for applicants to represent all seven cities of Solano County. I've served with the Civil Grand Jury of Solano County, this is my eighth time serving, two consecutive years, and then one year off, and then come back. So we are a watchdog of the community, we, we try to do our best in our due diligence because we love this area, and I think that Mike did it all, he's a first-time veteran now, because our year will be ending on June 30th, but I think it's a wonderful opportunity for people to get to know their city, their surroundings, and what the city government does, and be able to have an input and a say-so, so thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you both for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Alex Lunine.
It's on, okay, great. Members of the city council, thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to speak in front of y'all, or I guess perhaps more accurately, to ask for guidance. My name is Alex Lunine, and I'm speaking on behalf of the environmental nonprofit Sustainable Solano, and we are currently operating a program in Fairfield based around improving the city's air quality. This program is funded by the California Air Resources Board, and the main goal is to work with community members to help address Fairfield's less-than-ideal air quality. The California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment has designated Fairfield as having asthma burdens higher than 95%, or downtown Fairfield is having asthma burdens higher than 95% of other California census tracts, along with the same area having a higher cardiovascular disease burden than 81% of California census tracts. And while there are a plethora of sources that go into our air quality, one of the most pressing is the high volumes of vehicle traffic that our city just inherently gets by being sandwiched between the 12th and the 80, and the large amount of car dependence in our city as well. And here, I guess, comes the ask, so as part of our program, we have the funding to help install sidewalk beautification projects. These projects could be used to help plant trees, you know, provide greenery to Fairfield in areas that are mainly cement and asphalt-heavy, and I, the ask is for any of y'all to help with guidance in terms of areas that specifically you think can utilize the funds we have and the expertise we have in installing these projects, as well as getting them approved. I know that during the last city council meeting, a Mr. Lynch, I believe, talked about the need for beautification projects at Tabor Park. I have heard from community members additional spots along Tabor as well, but again, I am open to what you believe the city needs and the areas that we need. To learn more about the air quality issues in Fairfield- learn more about the air quality issues in Fairfield, you could, anyone could feel free to visit our website, sustainablesolano.org-air-quality, or email me, alex@sustainableSolano.org. Additionally, we've been running, we've started to run walking tours of Fairfield, in which we talk about the city's infrastructure and air quality. So we have a few events coming up on our website as well. So please feel free to check those out.
Thank you. The city manager would like to say a few words.
Yeah. Hey, Alex, thanks for coming out. It's not often someone comes out and says, "You have money for us." It's usually the other way around. So this is a breath of fresh air, so to speak. Right back in the back is Paul Koschel. He's our Public Works Director. And I'd just like to connect you two so that you guys could connect, you know, get that information shared.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Cornelius Wood.
Good evening, Miss Mayor, council members, whatever. I'd like to comment on the previous discussion about trips and whatever around town. I attended your retreat, as most of you know. And I think the mayor made it quite clear that she intended to ride around with the folks around town and reacquaint herself, and I think I'm quoting correctly, reacquaint herself with many of the places that she hadn't seen in a long time. And I offered to give her a ride, which she accepted at her convenience. I was not aware that it was going to come into a fairly formalized program at the time, which, although you might want to speak to your districts, I think that's one of the big divisive factors of having separate districts. Just exactly what's happened here. You all want to represent your district, and you don't want to be interfered by your district, instead of having the overall concerns of the city addressed. I think it would be quite fine for all of you to do the same thing, but give you any one of you a ride anytime. But I don't really think it should need to morph into this really formalized brown act, this, that, and next thing, defend your territory type of thing. And that's all I've got to say about it.
Thank you, Cornelius.
All right. And I don't have any more cards, nor do I have any hands raised on Zoom for public comments.
Thank you. So now, we're going to go to the consent calendar. If you could read the notice, please.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that a separate action be taken on a specific item.
Do we have any public speakers on this?
No cards and, oh.
Okay. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, I have questions about agenda item two and five.
Okay, we're going to pull those items then. And we will go ahead and do item two first.
Resolution 2023-2022 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for overtime compensation owed to employees represented by the Fairfield Police Management Association. And our presenter is Farbod Hrusman, Human Resources Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here to answer any questions you may have on this item. I can do a quick summary of what it's about, but I can also answer questions, whatever is your pleasure.
Thank you. So when I read this, the $120,000, I had a few concerns. And one was surrounding our police officers, I don't want them overworked. So my thought was, when I saw this $120,000, are we overworking our police officers? Is there $120,000? Seems to me, we can, we can hire a new police officer. And my third question surrounding that was, is this an amount that we were going to see going forward?
If I could take the last question first. No, this is not an amount we will see going forward. This actually is a payroll system glitch, really, that caused this issue. And there was definitely no extra overtime hours worked. It was a miscalculation of the compensation rate, an hourly rate, that sergeants needed to get paid. They were missing a piece of their pay, if you will. So under FLSA, the most, more recent case law, when we are calculating overtime rates, we have to take into account a lot of other pays that people in public safety have, our officers in public safety have. Therefore, we missed, we were missing one component, so we were just fixing that error.
So in summary, this, this isn't something we'll see again.
Correct.
Right. And, and this sounds like it's, was little amounts taken over a period of time.
Exactly.
And equaled up to $120,000.
Exactly. And it stretches out across all our sergeants, because they missed that on that pay.
Does that answer your question, Councilwoman, on that one? Does it answer your question? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, we need public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Is there any public comment on this?
I have no cards, and I have no hands raised online.
Okay. Councilman Carr?
Yeah, I just wanted to make for the record that I did have some questions, and I got them cleared up by our city manager prior to the meeting. But I just wanted to say that there are no penalties involved in any of this money. So that's, that's one of the important things, I think, that the public should know. There were no penalties attached to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion then on this item. We've got to do them individually, because we polled it?
Two minutes, 700.
We'll do two first. Vote on this. So moved, how about a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Opposed.
That was just on item two.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. All right. So the next item?
Item five, Resolution 2023-25 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, suspending competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager to purchase an energy generator system from Bay City Electric Works. And our presenter is Michael Heather, Utilities Director.
Thanks, Esther. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Assistant Public Works Director for the city's water utility. I can just answer your questions or go into, you know, some of the, the reason for being?
My questions, I have to admit, so when I see competitive bidding being suspended, I, I get, I'm not going to say triggered, but I, I get concerns. So my question was surrounding, and then when I looked at the equipment, it looked like equipment, you know, the names Caterpillar and I forgot the other one, you know, seemed to be common names of manufacturing equipment. So I guess my question was, why would we suspend competitive bidding on, on, on anything like this?
Well, if we could just step back, the purchase of the backup generator is actually a subcomponent of a broader project that we're conducting up at the water plant. That includes pumps, motors, switch gears, cabinets, a new transformer that we've been dealing with PG&E for the last two and a half years. So the backup generator, albeit it's a seven-figure price tag, we are going to go through, we're going to finish the design under a design, bid, build, project delivery method. And if we weren't going to do this pre-purchase, if you will, we would specify that the contractor procure this Kohler generator, because it's consistent with what we already have and own in the city of Fairfield at other reservoirs and pump stations. And it, it meets regulatory requirements straight out of the factory. So if we were to competitively bid it, meaning that you go out, there's only one supplier in, in the tri-state area, California, Nevada, and Hawaii. So you could, you could have, in my mind, one of three options. Sometimes when you bid something, you get no bid. That's always an option. We could have one bid, which is probably the, the Bay Area Electric. That could be the lone bid. Or you get multiple bids, but they would be from suppliers outside the area. And what they would do is mark it up, and then you'd pay a pass-through. So one of the main advantages is, with everything, lead times. So transformers, you're looking at 86, maybe 90 weeks in, as far as a lead time, and then prices change over time. So we are gaining a lead time in supply by procuring it. And the supplier has promised to maintain that price for us if we purchase it now.
Do we have, do we add that type of documentation to, to anything that says, look, we're suspending it, this is why, this is the only lone supplier in this area, they are securing, I mean, is, is that documented?
It conforms to our current purchasing policy, our admin policy.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, colleagues, on this one?
No, ma'am.
Any comments from the public on this? All right, I'll entertain a motion then on this item. Oh, I didn't hear the first, I'm sorry. Councilman Tonison? Oh, okay. All right, we're good.
Carr second.
Carr second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And, all right, that's unanimous then. So now, we're going to go ahead and take the, the rest of the agenda. One, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
A second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. Oops, what did I do here? Where am I now?
Item 10. Minute action improving mayor's appointments to the Youth Commission, Rockville Hills Regional Park Citizen Advisory Committee, and the Gulf Advisory Board. So I'm going to present on that item. May I please have all the, all the folks that are appointed? So for the Youth Commission, Harsook, bear with me if I mispronounce your name, Harsook Sidhu, Annalyn Riel Martinez, Keenfei Long Wilson. For Rockville, it'll be Nicholas Glazer. And then for the Gulf Advisory Board, it'll be Tom Ebert and Mike Garcia. Will you all please come up?
You can come on down in the well in here, we don't bite. I promise, you're good to go.
Testing, testing. Okay, I'm going to perform an oath for your appointment in the committees that you're appointed for. So I'm going to state, and you're going to repeat after me. So I, oh, sorry, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I.
Do you solemnly swear?
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Uni, oh, sorry, and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I would take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations!
And colleagues, while she's handing that out, Councilman Tonison and Councilwoman Panduro did the, thankfully, Councilman Tonison did it early. So did all the, the questioning and talking to these folks, and made the recommendations. And Councilman Tonison also brought a, a question and about making one of the committees seven. So that would be the Rockville Hills. And so we will, you know, if you guys can all concur, then we'll have staff go ahead and write up the ordinance and bring it back. Just thumbs.
Yeah, does that, does that need a motion, or just a simple?
Just a simple.
Yeah, so we're going to increase, increase Rockville from five to seven?
Yes, exactly.
We can take that direction, we'll bring that back.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
I didn't know if it was appropriate to ask.
Sure.
Now, about the Youth Commission. I saw in the city clerk's report that we don't have all of the youth commissioner spaces filled. I think there's five openings.
Yes.
And so my question was more surrounding, how are we doing outreach? Are we outreaching to schools? Are we outreaching to the colleges, to youth groups? How are we doing outreach?
I'll have, Madam Clerk, I don't know if you heard that question. Councilwoman was asking, how do we do outreach for the Youth Commission? If you could talk about that?
I know I work with our mod team, so we do a lot of definitely social media posts. We do also post to the papers. And I think, I don't know if anybody, current members from Youth Commission, I think whenever there are public events, and when they do have like a table, they try to encourage young folks when they walk by to sign up for Youth Commission. I can, I can check with them, staff that staffs Youth Commission, to see if they work with schools, or present at like probably school meetings, to see if they can encourage more folks to apply.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I remember when, when Pam and I used to do that, we always had more applicants than seats. And I'm wondering if we're doing something different or for, you know?
I don't know if we're doing anything different, but I know that we were in this, you know, we contacted the schools. So the schools made the announcement that, hey, the Youth Commission is looking for people. And I think that and social media is the way to do it. I mean, if we can get, I don't know if we would need to get Chris Corey on board or whatever, but it, just an opportunity to make the announcement officially through the school that we're looking for applicants, because we were flooded. I mean, we had to make tough, tough choices. We just had so many, so many smart students to apply. So to have it not full now is very concerning. So.
It is.
Yeah, we need to make sure we have a presence in the schools.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, for bringing that up. We're going to go ahead to item 11. And colleagues, I agendized this because I didn't want it to get away from us. And this is.
Mayor Moy, sorry to interrupt. And I think I, I probably jumped the gun like Karen, so I'm just very excited for these folks. I realize we didn't make a motion to approve these appointments.
Oh, you're right.
Although I did, I have a good feeling that we will.
You have a good feeling?
I'm going to let you do the honors.
We need to approve the appointments that we just made. So move, motion?
And I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I also was so caught up in the oath giving, should probably ask for public comment too, before you did the motion.
Any public comment on the appointments we just made?
I have no cards and no hands raised online, but anybody?
Nothing? Okay, sounds like they're all happy with it. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All righty, thank you. So now, we'll move on to item 11. So, Madam Clerk?
Item 11, City Council Discussion and Direction on a Way to Honor Item eleven, City Council Discussion and Direction on a Way to Honor the Late Mayor Harry T. Price for his Decades of Service to the Fairfield Community.
So the idea here is, or my idea was, to, for us to talk about it and give direction to staff on ideas. I did reach out to Councilman, former Councilman Chuck Timm, because he was very close to the mayor. And he brought up the idea of renaming, or just naming, the city council chambers after Mayor Harry T. Price. I also spoke with Councilman Vaccaro, and he said the same. And I spoke with Councilwoman Panduro before she left this evening. And she said either name a new park or the council chambers. So I'll leave it up to you all to, to talk about any ideas you have.
I really like that suggestion. I was, I was thinking the, the pond outside to, was a thought. I don't know what it takes to, and, and I, I have to be honest. I did receive the, the paperwork about naming culture criteria, but didn't quite understand it. So I figured I could just ask. I, I think the work that Mayor Harry Price did would, I, I would love to have a street named after him, if that's possible. I don't know if a, a main street can be a, a popular main street, like Texas Street could also be Mayor Harry Price Street, I don't know. But I, I have to admit, I was almost expecting a presentation of, of ideas.
Oh.
More than me trying to come up with something on a, on a, on a fly.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think we're probably all gonna come to a similar conclusion. But the chambers, Civic Center Drive, you and I talked about that. There's probably only three or four addresses on there, so you're not changing. I know a few years back when they changed, you know, Fred Bar, to Fred Barnes Drive, there was only four houses on that street, and they went to all of them first. The theater downtown, rooms at City Hall, maybe Willow Hall, just, I'm sure we're gonna all bounce the same, similar ideas off of each other. And so I'm, I'm good with either, but it would be nice to have it next to City Hall. And I'm cool with the chamber if that's something that we, we could vote on.
I like all of those ideas and the chamber. I think that is appropriate. He was such an eloquent man, and to have the chamber named after him would, would honor him in the way that I think he, he would approve. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, no, I agree with my colleagues one hundred percent. I think the chamber would be very, very appropriate. I mean, he is the epitome of what the mayor is in the city in terms of his advocacy and his diplomacy. And so I think it would be appropriate, and, and it would be great Civic Center Drive, too. I mean, can, can we have the chamber and Civic Center Drive out here, or is, are we limited to one?
We're the bosses.
Yeah, I provided you with a copy of your policy. And, and so when it comes to policies, City Council has a lot of latitude.
I'd like to make a motion then that we, that we rename this chamber the Harry T. Price City Council Chamber, or whatever the title is, and Civic Center Drive, if we can do that. So that is my motion.
Can I? How about some public comment? So I don't wanna hear it from the lawyer.
But my motion is pending.
Yes, pending, yes.
Wait for a second.
You, come, come on up, it's okay, yeah.
Hi, Dana Dean. At this moment, I'll say that I am on the County Board of Education. I represent Big Swath, so Fairfield in my trustee area. I came to know Harry, maybe it's ten, fifteen years ago now, but he was such a lovely person. Certainly, at a dead minimum, these chambers should, I, I would support the idea of these chambers being named for him. But I think it's also important to remember that Harry had a life before he was the mayor. And he was deeply involved in the schools and education and pretty much every aspect of this town. So from my own personal perspective, I think it's quite a bit more appropriate. There isn't enough, I think, would be my, my statement. There isn't enough that you could do. So certainly these chambers, but also the idea of, I, I would say Texas, let's go. You know, Texas Street, let's go. He's, he's the whole town, and that covers the whole town. So those are my comments, thank you very much. I'll see you later in a different capacity.
Thank you, thank you, it's Dean.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a Sure.
I got to know Harry the last few years. We got to be pretty close. He's a, just a wonderful caring man, and he was so proud of his years teaching at Vanden High School. And I realize it's difficult to change everyone's addresses and everyone's checks to a different street name, and that's real horrendous. But I don't know what it takes, I have no clue, what it takes to rename a school, but if there's anything you could do, that would be the place. And I, how many years did he teach there, thirty? I don't know. Something like that, that's it.
Thank you. Yeah, we would have to do that with another body, but I, you know, can certainly talk with them about that. What we have, is there anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion on the table.
I'll second Pam's motion.
Second?
Unless you seconded it already.
You did second it? Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. There we go.
So just to confirm, that was these council chambers and renaming Civic Center Drive?
Yes.
Thank you.
And with, you know, the comments in mind, we can have additional conversations with different entities about perhaps a, a school, Vanden, or something like that. So that's an additional, okay, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I was gonna add, you know, in, in just the comment about Vanden, I think is, is very well, well stated. We would have to look at the addresses. As, as one of the speakers said, you know, the difficulty does come down to when you have a lot of addresses, you know, on, on an individual street in the effort, then they could be involved. I don't know the address for Vanden, but we do have a project, as some of you are aware, in the pipeline adjacent to Vanden Road, Markley Lane.
Yes.
And just quickly, I mean, this is very back of the napkin, just quickly looking at a map, I don't know if there's any addresses. I don't know if Vanden High School or the elementary school is off of Vanden and that's their address. But we, we could look at that as an alternative as well, if that were something that the council were interested in. We can coordinate that with Travis. Okay.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. And Councilman Tonason, I appreciate you remembering that I'd talked about Civic Center Drive, 'cause he's Mr. Civic, as far as I, it makes sense, doesn't it? I mean, yeah, so thank you.
I'm only showing twelve hundred Civic Center, so there, there's probably only two, three addresses there.
Yeah, there, yeah, there are only a couple. Thank you, colleagues. I think that's appropriate. I look forward to us being out there when it, when it happens. Yep, all righty. So now we're gonna move on to item twelve, please.
Item twelve, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing modifications and a recapitalization of the Heart of Fairfield Revitalization Enhancement Assistance Program, as well as establishment of a downtown equipment loan program. And our presenter is Dwayne Dahlman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Oh, sorry. I'm here tonight to talk about modification of the existing REAP program, as well as the establishment of a potential equipment loan program. Just as a, just as a background, REAP actually stands for Revitalization Enhancement Assistance Program. And for those of you that are not familiar with it, it was established to encourage business owners and property owners to enhance their properties. So they can do that in, in those four ways. They could do that, make exterior improvements, interior improvements, could be used for signage, as well as outdoor seating and improvements involving that. So the current REAP program for minor facade improvement work that's up to ten thousand dollars, the program covers seventy-five percent of those costs. For major facade improvement that someone's making between ten and fifty thousand, the program basically covers twenty, or fifty percent of those costs. So you can do exterior work up to twenty-five thousand, interior work up to twenty-five thousand, with a maximum of fifty thousand dollars. So I just wanted to give, kind of visually walk you through some of the projects we've done recently, so you can really see kind of the impact that, that these improvements are making on our downtown buildings. First one is seven thirty-five Texas Street. So you can see the pictures before on the left. And then afterwards, you can see they've done really nice signage, lighting, painting. So just that aspect has made a big difference. We also highlighted seven forty Texas Street. So as you can see, they repainted the building, they put new awnings, new signage. They, they painted over the art deco kind of features in the building to make those stand out more. So also made a big difference on the overall building itself. Eight oh four Texas Street, this just was completed. So they did a complete overhaul of their frontage. They, they pulled out the alcove to the street. They did new storefront windows and doors and brick facade, as well as lights and, and new signage. And then last example I wanted to point out was seven oh two Jackson Street. So this is a large building on the corner, and it had, you know, faded kind of paint, and the awnings were ripped and torn. So they came in and repainted the building with new trim, new awnings. And now there's a new business on the corner. So that also made a big impact. But just wanted to point out how this program's working and visually how it's changing the buildings in downtown. So two thousand twenty-one, the Economic Development Strategic Plan was approved. And in that plan, they talked about expanding the existing REAP program to be able to accelerate change in the downtown through what they called catalyst projects. So two types of catalyst projects, wanted to point out. One is, is just converting existing space, an existing building in the downtown. That would include, but not limited to, things like brew pubs, restaurants, art galleries, things that would further the goal of what we're trying to create is a downtown food and arts district. But that also could include renovation, a larger scale renovation. So a catalyst project could be taking existing building that has an overall street frontage of more than a hundred feet, which would make a large, much greater impact. And, and that would be also considered as a catalyst project. So we talked about the, how the existing program works. The modified REAP program essentially doubles the amount that, that we're able to invest in a project. So for exterior facade work that's over fifty thousand, we could cover fifty percent of those costs, up to fifty thousand. And if they're doing exterior in addition to interior, then we could add an additional forty-nine thousand five hundred. So essentially, when we're doing to a modified project for a catalyst project, we'd be able to double the amounts for the existing program. Strategic Plan, besides calling for, you know, in potential helping to improve the, the look and feel of buildings, also realized that when you're talking about things like brew pubs or restaurants, many times there's also equipment involved in that. So the plan called for establishing essentially a downtown equipment loan program. And so the parameters of the program we've set up here would be amount could go up to ninety-nine thousand five hundred. The key part of that is that our amount wouldn't exceed more than fifty percent of what the overall equipment is. So we would make sure that, that they had as much money in the deal as we had. The term of the potential loan would be ten years. The rate would be two percent fixed over the life of the loan. We put in there a repayment feature that allows, because most of these would potentially be startup businesses, that, that if the loan was approved, they could defer payments for up to ninety days after the start of the business, since, since most of these startups have quite a bit of cost associated at the very beginning. And then from a collateral basis, we would take a UCC filing, all the equipment in either our first or subordinate deed of trust. In economic development, where we, we had a revolving loan program, so we're familiar with loans. And so, so this would, we'd, we'd have the ability to, to have this type of loan program as well. So project funding, just kind of walking through. So we'd be asking tonight to recapitalize the existing REAP program. We came back not that long ago, probably six or eight months ago, to, because of the, the impact we're having and more and more people taking advantage of it, we recapitalized. We had probably four or five loans that came through, and now we have an additional two or three that are coming to us. So part of this would be recapitalizing the existing program by a hundred thousand dollars. And then capitalizing the modification program for catalyst projects by two hundred thousand, capitalizing an equipment loan program by two hundred thousand. So altogether, we'd be requesting to transfer five hundred thousand from the existing Heart of Fairfield intergovernmental loan fund. You know, that fund's designated for economic development activities and transferring that money to the REAP program fund. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilman Tonason?
Thank you, Dwayne. So the criteria for the business loan, are we, are we approving collateral? Are we approving business or approve an individual? Who is the loan tied to?
So the loan would be tied to the business, so they would apply. And this would be, this would just be for catalyst projects. So if someone came to us and said we wanted to, whether it was a brew pub or new restaurant coming to downtown, and, and, and they wanted to make, make changes to the building, applying to the REAP program for the building, in conjunction with that, if they had equipment that was involved with that, then they could apply to us for the equipment loan.
So what, sorry, I live in this world, what happens if they default?
So if they default, then, then we would go back on our collateral, which would be the equipment, or whether it was a first or second position in the deed of trust on the building.
And, and you've done this before?
We have not had this type of program. We were involved with the revolving loan fund for businesses. So we're familiar with that process of making small business loans.
So we service that loan? The city services the loans?
We have in the past, yes. I mean, the number wasn't, we were, you know, it was probably
How many can we handle?
Four or five loans. It wasn't a large number that we were doing.
That's right. It's not gonna be a hundred loans, it's gonna be, okay, that's good, I'm good with that, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilwoman Williams?
Along the same vein, I'm still getting my, trying to get my mind around exposure, and I heard the answer, so let me just ask it a little bit different, so my brain processes. I saw the UCC filing. The UCC filing is against the business, but not the building.
So the UCC filing is against the equipment itself. So if someone would come and say, you know, we're purchasing this equipment, the UCC filing would be against that equipment itself. So if they defaulted on the loan, then, then a typical lender under that scenario would be saying, okay, well now you're not making payments for the equipment anymore, similar to a car. We would take the equipment back and then we would sell that to pay off the loan.
What type of equipment are we talking about?
So it'd depend what they, what they were using it for. So in the case of like, say, a brew pub, they'd be looking at equipment for, for tanks or for brewing type of equipment. If it was a restaurant, it could be for ovens, appliances, things like that.
So if they default and take their oven with them, we're now just out of the money?
So the fallback position for us would then be, as the, as the property owner, it would be first or second deed of trust against the property that we would then go to, to find the repayment for our loan.
So the business is left, and now we're going after the property?
Well, well, this would be to the, this, we wouldn't be able to make the business loan unless it was also approved by the property owner, very similar to our facade, our REAP program. So that program can be applied to by a property owner. It could also be applied to by the business. In order for the businesses to receive the, the facade loan, it also has to be approved by the property owner.
Yeah, so the equipment piece of it, I don't know. To me, it feels like it needs to be flushed out a little bit. But the facade, I think the facade, that's where, I, I love it, I love it. When I go down, downtown, there, it feels like it's being uplifted. It feels different, the energy is different. I can't say, oh, it's this building or this building, but there's an overall like lifting. And I think there's nothing, not nothing more important, but one of our most important priorities is making sure that downtown is, is a place that everybody goes, really is the heart of Fairfield. Really is the heart of Fairfield. And I think that facade program does it. That equipment piece, I don't know, I just don't quite feel comfortable with it yet. Not that you're, I don't even know what you're, quite what you're asking us to do, but.
So, oh, go ahead. Oh, so on the, the resolution tonight is to approve all the aspects of those, recapitalizing the existing loan, of recap, of capitalizing the modification to the REIT, but also capitalizing the loan program. So there's three aspects of that. And the only other thing I'll say is that, you know, typically, these kind of programs are just other tools for economic development to be able to, when we're out trying to attract these businesses to our downtown, you know, these type of things are typically used as tools to be able to say, okay, here's the incentive that we have for you to locate in downtown Fairfield versus Vacaville or some other community around us.
Councilman, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
And this program, is this grant funded? Did we apply for a grant and that's where these dollars are coming from?
It comes from the Intergovernmental Loan Fund, which was set up years ago. So no, it was not grant funding.
It's just money that's sitting there for this purpose? Okay.
Just, I'll just maybe tighten it up a little bit, Duane. So we're setting up limited exposure to try and help these businesses get along. There is some risk to us, but it's minimal. The price of the equipment, they're going to have some skin in the game. We're going to have some skin in the game.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah, so that's, that was the 50% component. And we can come-
So we're already at 50%, okay, yeah.
Any other questions here? Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So with respect to the facade aspect of this proposal, are there any parameters in place to somehow encourage the development of the new facades to be, to form some kind of continuity downtown? I mean, the new facades standing alone are fresh and nice, but are we, are we looking to the continuity of our downtown in terms of these different facades? Because one facade is new and pretty, but it's very unlike another facade that's new and pretty. And my fear is that it'll look like a hodgepodge of patchwork facades that are all new, but there's no continuity to our downtown. So that's a long-winded question to ask. Are there any parameters, or is it possible to have any such parameters to facilitate a continuity downtown as we improve the facades through this program?
We don't, I mean, oftentimes, or sometimes cities will have like downtown design standards.
Yes.
We don't have that yet, but that's something that we could look into. But that's typically what you're talking about.
Please do. Because I think the program is great and the facades are nice, but we hopefully want to have some kind of theme, continuity to the facade. So that would be great to see what other cities are doing in that regard.
Okay.
So you'll report back to us on that?
I will.
Super awesome, thank you. Otherwise, I'm green light.
Councilwoman Williams?
Let me just run this past you. So I'll just say it, the equipment things bother me. So isn't there an SBA 7A loan? Did I get the numbers right? That do equipment loans?
There is. So the SBA has the 7A program, which is basically a loan guarantee program. So a bank would make the loan and then the SBA would guarantee that loan. So yeah, there are other options for people to go out for financing. Ours would probably be a little more aggressive than the terms of an SBA loan, a bank loan. So I think the difficulty sometimes for particularly startup businesses is having the bank parameters of cash flow, collateral, all the things that banks are typically looking for. So with cities in the, getting into loan programs and grant programs, yes, it is a riskier type of program, but typically it's at parameters that are more conducive to startup type of businesses.
Madam Vice Mayor?
And also, isn't this a way to incentivize economic development downtown? And see, that's part of the risk, you know, I think it's the cost benefit analysis. But if we're supplying or facilitating these equipment loans, that's part of an incentive package for new businesses to come to Fairfield as opposed to going somewhere else. Whereas if it were an SBA type loan, that would not be as much of an incentive as it would be if we have this kind of equipment program in our city.
Right. And I'm happy to come back-
It's an incentive.
Yes, I agree with that. And I'm happy to come back, if the council wishes I could come back at a future council meeting and go through like the underwriting kind of guidelines of what specifically we'd be looking for before we would approve these loans. If that's something that's needed.
Yeah, I'm good to go. I'm ready to vote on it. I think it's great, thank you.
Councilman Carr, did you have anything to add here?
I don't, actually, I read it. Pretty much, I think all the questions were good, but we incentivize-
To get these businesses going is very important, so.
All right. Do we have any public comments on this?
I have no cards and I have no hands raised online.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved and a second from Councilman Tonison, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. You can give me a nay. All right, thank you. All right, so the motion passes with, was it one to, four to one? I can count. How about that? Getting good, okay. All right, so now we're going to move to public hearings.
Wait, item 13 first. Item 13, Resolution 2023-30 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield approving agreement with the North Texas Street Business Association of the Year, 2023 Operation and Administration of the North Texas Street Business Improvement District. And our presenter is Duane Dahlman, Economic Development Division Manager.
Thank you again. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm actually here just to give kind of a brief overview of this. This is something that's happened annually and for the new council members. So I thought I would just kind of give a very brief kind of overview of what this is about and what we're approving tonight. So just a little bit of history. In 1999, the City Council approved the establishment of the North Texas Business Improvement District, and as well as the ability to level levy assessments. At that time, the North Texas Business, North Texas Street Business Association was appointed to serve as the advisory board for the bid. The bid spells out an annual assessment of 58,000, which is to be collected from the businesses. That amount has not changed since it was established in 2000. So in order to collect the levy, every year, the following things need to happen. First is that the NTSBA submits an annual advisory report to the City Council, spelling out the amount of the levy collected from the last year as well as the activities of last year. And then also presents the budget and the activities planned for the upcoming year. This report and the 2023 budget were approved by the council at the last meeting. So tonight, this means the public hearing required before the council can approve the agreement for the NTSBA to provide the services that they're providing, as well as assess the levy for this year. So I just wanted to give that kind of brief summary of what we're here for. And I'm here to answer any questions, as well as Jared from the Chamber of Commerce.
Colleagues, any questions on this? Yes, Councilman Tonison?
So it's 58,000. I'm told 48,000 of it is going to the chamber. So does that leave 10,000 left for NTSB?
Yes.
What can we do with 10,000?
Maybe at this point, it'd probably be best for Jared to talk about kind of what that 48,000 is used for.
How you doing, Jared?
And thank you, council members and Mayor Moy. So the $48,000 actually goes to quite a bit. It's marketing, it's domain. We actually just released a website. It's the management of that website, the building and developing of that website. It's the management of all of the meetings. It's the putting together the events that the NTSBA wants to hold. It's doing rack cards. It's managing the Facebook and Instagram accounts, right? It's not just this blanket dollar amount that just goes into the pockets of the chamber. It's something that's being spread out through expenses that we incur managing the association.
I just think you need more.
Oh, I would love more. I would love more.
This seems like a low figure to me. But that's all I wanted to say. It seems like a low figure. So the 58,000 is coming from where?
It's coming from the bid.
From the, and it's just-
And I will tell you, we've got quite a bit of carryover from previous years due to COVID and having kind of this dormant space of not a whole lot going on.
I appreciate what you're doing. I know how much work's involved with it. I just would like to see you have more money than 58,000. Sure, you'd like that too.
If council would like to figure out how to make that happen, I'm more than welcome to hear.
Thank you. Anybody else, colleagues? All right, do we have any public comments on this?
I have no cards and no hands raised online.
All righty, then I'll entertain a motion. So moved by Councilman Tonison and a second from the Vice Mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that was approved unanimously. All right, and now we're going to move on to public hearings.
Public hearing and Resolutions 2023-31 through 2023-35 and Ordnance 2023-05 for proceedings including a landowner election to establish a Community Facilities District, one or more improvement areas, and a future annexation area for the One Lake Project. And our presenter is John Furtado, Director of Finance. Meili is excited to go.
I thought I got my numbers wrong. Good evening, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, we need to hold. We don't have a quorum currently on the dais.
Okay. We're just waiting for the Vice Mayor to return, so we have a quorum? Or Councilman Tonison? We'll take them both. Can I leave? Now we have a quorum and so, Madam Clerk?
It's actually John.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is John Furtado, the City's Finance Director. Before you tonight is the formation of the Community Facilities District Number 2023-1 for planning Area 5 of the One Lake Project and the issuance of bonds for the CFD in combination with prior CFD 2019-1. This CFD will provide funding for public facilities and public services related to the One Lake Project. The One Lake developer is currently the only landowner in the proposed CFD and there are no residents. City Council initiated the formation process for this CFD on January 17, 2023, with the adoption of two resolutions of intent. Tonight, the council is being asked to conduct a public hearing, hold a mail-in ballot election, adopt the proposed resolutions, and introduce an ordinance levying special taxes in the proposed CFD. After tonight's meeting, the only remaining action to be taken by council to complete the formation of the CFD will be a second reading and adoption of the ordinance. We have provided the mayor and the city clerk with detailed script for tonight's process. And the city's bond counsel, Chris Lynch of Jones Hall's, is available by Zoom to answer any other questions.
Thank you, I was just asking a question of- This is 14. Okay, all right, thank you. They had to straighten me up a little bit here. Okay. So now, these are the public hearings in the council's proceedings for Community Facilities District, excuse me, Number 2023-1, One Lake Planning Area 5. The hearings are to inquire into three things. First, the formation of the district, an improvement area number one in the district, and a future annexation area for the district. Second, the levy of special taxes in the district to finance public facilities and ongoing public services. And third, the need to incur bonded indebtedness and other debt for the district to finance the cost of the public facilities. Does anyone wish to file written protests? If so, they must be filed with the city clerk now. Looks like none. Okay. I'm going to now open the public hearing. We already had the presentation by staff? Okay. By staff and we don't, consultants on this?
Yeah, we have the consultants if there are any questions that I cannot answer.
Okay, all right. Then after that, if you have questions, then we'll receive comments and questions. And then all the comments have been received, the hearings will be closed, and you've made your presentation. So do you all have any questions of the consultant?
No, ma'am.
No questions? All right. Okay. Does any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. When you refer to the CFD-
Speak into the mic there.
My name's Lakisha.
Hi.
Hi, how are you? And I, I'm listening to you and you're speaking of the CFDs. Are you speaking of the bond programs? That, kind of like Melrose, things like that?
Yeah, this is a type of Melrose program, yes.
So, living in an area that has Melrose and it was established in 2004, that was, there were some promises made to residents. I wasn't here at that time, I moved to Fairfield in 2015. But there was a promise of a school, a police substation and things like that. And so I just want to ensure that the public is aware that if you are going to approve or propose these Melrose, that you're going to actually commit to providing the services and the establishments that you say you're going to do. Because I can tell you that we never got a school. These kids are now probably grown and gone. And we've paid a lot of money into the Melrose not to have anything there. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention so that the public can know that if they're going to approve and not protest this, that some of these services may not be given for many, many years. So, I digress.
Oh, thank you very much. Did anyone want to speak to that, or?
Yeah, so we have different types of facilities districts. This particular district is for infrastructure. And the infrastructure that will be funded is documented in the notes to this.
Right, okay. All right, is there anybody else from the public who wants to speak?
So you said- Thank you. You said that the infrastructure will be documented in the notes? Is that what you just said? It was at the very end of your comments?
Yes, so there is, and I can have the bond counsel speak further to this. This approves $90 million worth of infrastructure, including a fire station.
Okay, so, you know, in following up on our resident's comment, she lives in that district that she's talking about, which is District 6, I think it still is. But can anyone speak to the issue that she raised? Which is that, you know, for the- which is that, you know, for the for the Melrose funding that has been paid in millions of dollars out in that district, that Plan Two said that there was gonna be a fire station? And and we're saying that now. Are there any are there any safeguards in place to make sure that that actually happens? I think that's the question.
We, when anything, the the bonds would be issued with the City's knowledge. The City will not be on the hook for those bonds, but we would be monitoring that whatever was written up in in the requirements are fulfilled before the payments are made. And so will the bond issuers. Because this will be.
I don't think that's addressing my question. My my question is really about the payment of the Melrose funds for these future residents. So when they come to this area and they look at these beautiful new homes and facilities and they're happy to pay their Melrose tax, is there anything in these bonds or any regulations that requires, that ensures, that that fire station actually gets built?
So i- in this case, yes, I would say yes for this particular one because the fire station is the first one that's gonna be funded when we start getting the bonds. And that money will come to the City and the City will actually construct. So I can confidently say yes on that one. And with regards to the question, I can speak to the lady and investigate which CFD that was because we have infrastructure CFDs and we also have service CFDs. So without a context, I cannot answer that question. What I can find out and give her the guidance.
Okay, and so we're guaranteed that fire station?
Oh, yeah, without these monies, you can't finish the Fire Station Thirty-nine project that we've committed to.
Ooh, a guarantee, that's nice. Thank you very much, appreciate it. I got you, Chief. I see you back there.
Councilman Carr?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I missed your name?
Lakisha.
Thank you.
Is is there anybody else from the public online or anything who would like to speak on this?
I don't have any cards and no hands raised online.
Thank you. Colleagues, anybody else with any questions? All right, then I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'm going to bring this back to you. Now, we're gonna do it in in parts. So first, we're going to approve resolutions, hopefully, two thousand thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three to thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three to thirty-two, and two thousand twenty-three thirty-three. I'll entertain a motion. So moved by Councilman Tonason, second from the Vice Mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that passed unanimously. City Clerk, would you like to open the ballots and announce the results?
And it is a yes vote.
Alrighty, very good. Next, let's see, I'm gonna go over here when I say, okay. So next, we want to approve resolutions two thousand twenty-three to thirty-four and two thousand twenty-three to thirty-five. So moved from Scott Tonason and Vice Mayor, second, all in favor? All right. And could you open that ballot, please, Madam Clerk?
There's no ballot for that part. It's just it's just the first portion, the three resolutions that you approved earlier.
Oh, perfect, okay, good, good. Okay, well, that's it.
Actually, no, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, now you still have a motion. You need a motion to introduce and waive full reading of ordinance two zero two-three dash zero five.
Okay. Councilman Tonason and a second from Councilman Carr, all in favor? Thank you, passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to item fifteen.
Item fifteen.
Okay, yes, Councilwoman.
So I'm gonna be recusing myself from this hearing. The Attorney Dana Dean is a friend of mine, and I think it's more appropriate for me to step out.
Okay, if you wish to do so, okay.
Well, full disclosure, she's a friend of mine, too. Hi, Dana. So, you know, I mean, I I believe that I can be impartial and I'm I'm fine staying up here. But just full disclosure, I know Dana and we're friends, too. So, is it cool for me to stay, Mr. Lim?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you don't legally have to, Councilwoman, it's up to you.
Yeah, and and that was explained to me.
Okay.
But then when I think of the layers, she's a really good friend. And she's given me a thousand dollars for my camp, this campaign, another campaign. I mean, there's a lot of layers.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for that.
So it's the appearance that I'm concerned about.
Yes, your appearance, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm so eager, I've been cutting off John.
She's ready to go, she's ready to go. Okay, okay, sorry, I'll reread it again.
Yeah, please.
Item number fifteen. Public hearing and resolution twenty twenty-three dash three-six of the City Council of the City of Fairfield upholding the Planning Commission's decision and approving a minor development review, MD twenty twenty-one dash zero one-one, and use permit UP twenty twenty-one dash zero zero-two for the development of a recreational vehicle storage facility and the capacity of one hundred thirty-eight vehicles and solar carports on a plus or minus four point two-one acre parcel at four ninety Edison Court, APN number zero one eight zero dash one three zero dash one one zero. And our presenter is Maile Sheehan, Principal Planner.
Just one minute, this is a hearing to consider the appeal brought by Edison RV Storage for the project located at four ninety Edison Court. Can we please have all the parties to the hearing introduce themselves?
Good evening. My name is Dana Dean and I am the attorney representing Storage Pro Fairfield, which is the applicant, appellant. And I'm here tonight with Steve Marabito, who is the president of the company.
All right, thank you. And city staff?
I'm ready, sorry, I'm making sure I get the green light this time.
And Madam Mayor, I should I should add, Ms. Dean asked, and it's completely at your discretion in terms of timing. She'd ask, and I don't want to speak for her, but I think she was asking for ten minutes' presentation and five-minute rebuttal. I don't know if you want to be that formal or just let her go, it's it's completely up to you. But she did make that request.
I'm just gonna let you go, just, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes, all right. All right, now.
It's okay, it's good hype, right? So, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Maile Sheehan, I'll be presenting the item this evening. The project is located on a vacant four point two-one acre site off of Edison Court, which is accessed off of Lopes Road. The parcel is designated IL or Limited Industrial. The project proposal is a recreational vehicle storage facility that consists of one hundred and thirty-two covered parking stalls and an additional six uncovered stalls. As demonstrated on the site plan, the property will be accessed through an existing adjacent mini-storage facility to the east. So if you can see my laser pointer here, this is a recent mini-storage facility that was constructed. The access is off of Lopes Road. You would go through the internal network and cross property lines here and follow the arrows through the RV storage site and exit off of Edison Court. So effectively, the two properties function as one project site. A quick synopsis of what brings us here this evening. The project was initially approved by the Community Development Department at a zoning administrator hearing on August first, two thousand twenty-two. There were several conditions of approval placed on the project. The conditions range from special conditions regarding trash and waste disposal to standard utility connection criteria that is placed on every new development. It should be noted that city staff coordinated with the applicant for several weeks on the conditions of approval before granting the actual approval itself. The project applicant did still have concerns regarding four conditions of approval and appealed the decision to the Planning Commission. On October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, the Planning Commission reviewed the appellant's request to remove or revise conditions. The condition topics included waste management signage, trash enclosure dimensions, and two conditions regarding indemnification clauses. I'll go into each of the items a little more thoroughly as we continue through the presentation. After a lengthy discussion, the commission made a motion to uphold the zoning administrator's approval and partially grant the appeal by revising the condition regarding the trash enclosure dimensions. Essentially, the Planning Commission upheld all of the conditions of approval except for one condition that required a eighteen by ten, if I'm recalling that properly, dimension trash enclosure to reduce trash enclosure size. On October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, staff returned to Planning Commission with that revised resolution. For this evening, the appellant has recently made another appeal request for the City Council to review the project conditions of approval once more. There are five conditions the appellant is seeking to be removed or revised. The first condition is regarding the trash enclosure requirement as a whole. The second and third conditions are regarding waste management signage. Item number two here is signage that states customers have access for waste disposal. Item number three is a supplemental condition to that first one that states the final design of the signage shall be subject to the review and approval of the Public Works Department. And for the fourth and fifth conditions, they are once again requesting the Council look into the City's standard indemnification clause. So starting with the trash enclosure condition, the appellant asserts that the construction of a trash enclosure is unreasonable and unrelated to the amount of waste generated by the RV storage use and that waste carts could be utilized and stored indoors in place of a full enclosure. Therefore, the appellant is requesting that this condition is removed. Staff does not support this request as the City's municipal code requires that all commercial and industrial development provide a standard commercial slash industrial container. The code defines standard commercial industrial containers as state-of-the-art bins or boxes designed for mechanical pickup by collection vehicles that are equipped with a lid. There's much, much longer definition, but that's the concise version of it. Additionally, it should be noted that the size of the trash enclosure has been reduced twice and is now at the lowest size permitted by the City's Trash Recycling and Organics Enclosure Design Guidelines. I have dimensions listed on Items Two and Three under staff, but my next screen is a little more informative. So what you can see on this screen, the red box and the red arrow is the standard requirement based on the project's square footage, an eighteen by twelve-foot enclosure. When reviewing and drafting the conditions of approval with the applicant in the early stages of the project before the zoning administrator hearing, we did recognize that an RV storage project would most likely have a lower generation of of waste. And therefore, what was conditioned was the eighteen by nine-foot enclosure. However, during the Planning Commission appeal hearing, the Planning Commission did make a motion and passed of even reduced dimension size, which is highlighted in yellow there, the thirteen-foot by eight-foot. So as of right now, the project is conditioned to construct a thirteen-foot by eight-foot enclosure, which is the lowest size permitted under our design guidelines here. Moving along to the signage conditions, the second condition the appellant is requesting the Council consider is a specific condition that requires waste management signage to be posted on-site, stating that customers shall have access to waste receptacles. The appeal reiterates its original commission appeal that the signage condition will adversely affect the business by overburdering the operations with waste management responsibilities that exceed what is appropriate for the RV storage use. The appellant claims that the condition is unreasonable and will encourage dumping of imported waste, including hazardous materials. The appeal concludes that the condition should be removed because there is no specific code regulation that requires the signage and there are no other properties that have such signage. The appellant is correct in stating that there is no specific city standard requiring such a condition. During the months leading up to the project approval, it became apparent to staff that the project operator was not inclined to use the required trash enclosure. And therefore, a special condition was crafted as a safeguard to ensure the availability of waste disposal to all of the customers. This would ensure that there is not waste left uncontained on the property, which would ultimately be the business operator's responsibility to collect and properly dispose of. And it also ensures that there wouldn't be additional waste being left on-site or off-site and potentially impacting our surrounding neighborhoods in the adjacent Jameson Creek. So it was really crafted in place to ensure that there would be a place somewhere on the project site that customers could drop their trash and ensure that we maintain our clean city. Furthermore, I do want to point out that the municipal code does have sections that require signage for source separation. But not only that, there are also sections under that same code that states notification for employees and tenants shall be provided regarding proper waste disposal. Uncontained waste would impact the facility operations, placing responsibility and burden on the business. And we believe that this requirement or condition would help guide all customers to dispose of their waste properly and not litter. Bridging off of that condition, we have the supplemental condition that essentially states the final design verbiage and placement of that sign shall be subject to the review and approval of the Public Works Department. The appellant asserts this condition improperly defers critical design details and that it leaves open the possibility that the signage could be visible from the general public right away and encourage members of the public to come on to the property and dump. And this, of course, would increase risk borne by Storage Pro, the operator. Therefore, the appellant is requesting that this condition is removed as well. The condition language prepared by staff is not necessarily unusual in that it requires final review and approval by staff at a later date. We oftentimes craft language like this when we don't have the exact design details upfront. It allows the project to move on to the next step of building permits or construction without holding them up with back-and-forth design details during the entitlement phase. Additionally, there is a municipal code section that states no building permits shall be issued until the adequacy, location, accessibility of a standard commercial industrial container have been approved by the city. So although this section is not directly addressing waste management signage such as this one, it was the staff's intent that the signage be constructed in relation to or with the trash enclosure, and so it can be reasonably associated to this code section. And finally, as you've heard me say several times, the purpose of the condition is to ensure that customers have disposal options for their waste. It is not meant to advertise off-site members of the public to come on to this secure site and and dump any of their wanted waste or unwanted waste. And then last conditions for Council's review is the City's standard indemnification clause. This condition appears in two locations, once in the minor development conditions of approval and once in the conditional use permit required for the project. The condition was prepared with the guidance of legal counsel years ago and has been standardized. The appellant claims that the City's indemnification clause is too broad when compounded with the signage conditions. It unreasonably requires the facility to assume risks imposed by the signage conditions and requests that the condition is revised to require the city accept joint and several liabilities for claims arising out of the disposal of hazardous waste on-site. So they are requesting that that condition be amended should the signage conditions remain. As noted, the indemnification clause, excuse me, was prepared with guidance of legal counsel several years ago and has been applied to all of our development entitlements and conditional use permits for at least the last eight years that I have been here and most likely longer than that. most likely longer than that. The intent is to reduce the city's liability on private property, and in no circumstances do we recommend that this language be revised or removed. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation by offering a recommendation and a few potential alternatives. These are not all the alternatives, but there are a few that staff thought made sense and could walk the council through if interested. So staff is recommending that council adopt Resolution 2023-36, upholding the planning commission's approval of the conditions as currently written. Should the council be interested in an alternative action? Option two on the screen there would be to approve the appeal and remove the conditions regarding the trash enclosure and the two signage conditions. This alternative would leave the indemnification conditions as is, as the appellant only wanted modifications to those conditions if the signage ones were to be removed. I do want to note that this alternative would go against our municipal code's requirement for trash containers. The third option on the screen, council could partially approve the appeal and remove just the signage conditions. In this alternative, the trash enclosure and indemnification clauses would remain, but the two signage conditions would be removed. And then for option four, council could modify the signage conditions as you desire. This would leave the trash enclosure indemnification conditions in place, but staff would need the council's direction of what you believe the signage conditions should read as. And I would also like to note that staff has only prepared a resolution for the recommendation that you uphold the planning commission's decision, and so any alternative motions made this evening would require staff to return with a revised resolution. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
First, I think the city attorney, do you want to swear them in now or wait until questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if you'd like to have them sworn, I can swear them in.
I'd like, yeah.
Okay, I think I'll just do it all at once, so if staff wants to stay standing and if the attorney and owner, if you plan to make any statements, I'll swear you in. Everyone, go ahead and raise your right hand.
Should we also grab Cory Beers or Public Works staff who might?
Anybody who's going to possibly talk should stand up and raise their hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you have given or will give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Yes, there's one.
Very good.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of statements before Dana gets up. Is that okay?
Yes.
I'm already leaning towards an alternative. I think that we're going over. I drove five or six, maybe seven, storage units and RV units and places like that, and the signage doesn't seem like, I mean, signage for trash just doesn't seem like a big deal, and when they are, when they're worried about hazardous waste or trash getting out, I mean, we've got the Man City, I watched both planning commission meetings, so we've got the man telling us that we're going, you know, he's not going to let that happen. And in today's world with all the cameras, I don't see, it just seems overkill to me. So I just wanted to start off with saying I'm leaning towards certainly an alternative. And then I'll go into detail after Dana if we want to, or depending on how you guys feel, too. Thank you.
Councilman Carr?
Yeah, I have some experience. I have an RV, and I've had RV in storage, and most people that go to put their RV in storage have it cleaned up at their prior to storing it. They don't usually go and the hassle of putting it in the undercover and then do the work there. That's just my observations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All right. Counsel?
Thank you so much. Before I start, I just want to mention that I did give the city clerk a comment letter. Hopefully, everybody caught it. Okay, great. All right, thank you. Well, I can't decide. These are my new reading glasses. I can't quite, I think I'll go this way for the moment.
Just put them at the end of your nose, this is what I do like this.
Last time I was here, I don't believe I was wearing reading glasses, so that was a while ago. Anyway, my name is Dana Dean. I am an attorney, and I'm here tonight representing Storage Pro Fairfield, and as I mentioned, the president, Mr. Mirabito, is with me tonight. I have basically five comments. I want to start with the most basic and essential part of our appeal, and that is about the use itself. It is so important to understand that this project, what this project is and what it is not. It is a safe and well-lighted place to park your RV. That's it. This is all it is planned for or intended to be. Importantly, very importantly, there is no waste generated on the facility, on the project. It is not an RV park. This is not a business where folks pull up in their RV, stay the night, put water in, dump waste, take a shower, whatever. So it may seem like just being concerned about this particular language is a lot about a little thing, but it really is a lot, because what you're doing by imposing this is fundamentally changing the business that Mr. Mirabito plans to do on the site. The requirement has Steve, requires him to direct and invite people who park their RVs to dump their trash, imported trash, not onsite trash. You are fundamentally changing the use and forcing an altered business model on the applicant for all the reasons stated in our appeal and some mentioned tonight and in the comment letter from Storequest, which by the way is a competitor, but supportive of our position. It is, hopefully you understand it is a substantial burden, and we're asking you to relieve us of that. It's arbitrarily imposed, by the way. Hopefully, you know, in particular from my comment letter, that in the period of time, the lengthy period of time that Mr. Mirabito has brought this project forward, the planning commission has approved six CUPs during this time that we're applying, six CUPs for much more intense uses without requiring signage directing customers, we don't have customers, by the way, directing customers to put their trash through. So hopefully, you've seen them, but they include Dutch Brothers, the hotel and drive-thru restaurant, and the new chicken place, Raising Canes. So none of those folks, they actually generate trash. They're not required to put signage up. So because of the arbitrary nature of the application, this is also wildly unfair. And I want to step back and say, I know in my original appeal, I stated how significant it was to put this burden on a person who comes, a whole company that comes to Fairfield and says, hey, we want to do something that's an amenity for your residence, and it is. It's a huge benefit to be able to drive your RV to someplace close to your home. So I think that's important. I'll also mention that the staff report indicates that the signage is necessary to ensure waste is not left uncontained on the site. If that's the concern, that should be the condition. The applicant will ensure that uncontained waste is not left on the site, or the applicant, what I've seen for all the years I've been doing this, the applicant will maintain a clean and orderly facility. So, one thing. Another point I'd like to make is that, the second thing, the staff report, and actually tonight, staff indicated that the signage is imposed to safeguard the availability of waste for customers. As I mentioned, we don't have customers. These are people who are driving and parking their RV and going home. Again, back to it's a secured and well-lighted place to park your RV for storage. There are no customers, there are no folks hanging out. That's not what this space is about. And I'll repeat or mention that if that is so significant to the health and safety of the city, then why would you not require that of all these other folks who are actually generating trash? So again, goes to the arbitrary nature of things. I appreciate that we've avoided the discussion on the procedural defects and the challenges around the timing of the appeal. I'm not going to get into it too much, except to say we've all been through a lot these past couple of years, a couple, few years, and I work in a lot of different cities and counties, and staff has done just an incredible job to just get through what had to be gotten through. So my comments about the procedural defects, and they do exist, in particular, the second hearing, they're not intended as an attack on staff at all. We just want to move forward, get a really good project going, and the basic of that is to please remove, I love to, we'd love to see to, remove the signage, remove the trash enclosure for similar reasons. There is no need for a trash enclosure there, but at a minimum, please work on alternate three, which is to remove that signage, because if you remove the signage requirement, that necessarily avoids the second, the other two things, the supplemental signage requirement as well as our concern about indemnity. Hopefully, that's clear, what I just said. And then, so please, two or three is what we're asking for. And the other thing I'll mention is when we got, when we finally did get the resolution in December, it actually had that the approval occurred on August 1st. And the problem with that, of course, is that you're eating into more than six months of the time for the permitting or the ability to move forward, which would typically be a 24-month period. So we'd like you to ensure that the approval tonight of two or three is dated from tonight so that we have, the applicant has the full time to move forward. We are here to answer any question that you have. I appreciate all your time.
Thank you, Counsel. Does the city wish to respond?
Excuse me, I have a few just minor things just to fill, I guess, the picture. Dana did a great job of kind of recapping some of our back-and-forth interactions over a lot of weeks here. Everyone's been working hard to get this project to this point. I did want to just touch on the period of time that the project has taken. It's detailed in your staff report, but I didn't go through it in the presentation because it felt like a lot of information. But I do want to highlight that the project was first submitted in April 2021, so it has been some time since then. However, there was a large pause on the project for environmental evaluation, so not necessarily tied to the conditions that we're touching on today. There is Jameson Canyon Creek that runs along the backside of the project. Without getting into the deep nitty-gritties of civil engineering, it was resolved and the project could move forward without a large SEQA document, but that was a big pause within that project. And then we did go, we had our first zoning administrator hearing on June 13th when the applicant team first raised their concerns on the conditions. So we continued that hearing so as that we could give ourselves more time to coordinate with the applicant team on a resolution of conditions everyone could agree upon. We actually did resolve, I want to say about half of the concerns they had, but of course, as we're here today, there are a few conditions that we did not come to terms on. So we picked that zoning administrator hearing back up in August 1st, and then we go to planning commission October 12th. Because there is an alternative motion and resolution, we return in October 26th to pass that resolution. Just due to administrative backlog, we don't have the signed and executed resolution until December, and as Dana noted, it does have an August 1st date, which was tying to the very first zoning administrator hearing, and that was just simply an error that was not anything intentional, and you'll see your packet tonight does have today's date for the conditional use permit.
All right, Counsel, do you have anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, not at this time.
Any other evidence or witnesses at all? All right. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on this?
Thank you so much.
So do both sides rest then now?
Well, do we ask questions or?
Yeah, we're going to ask questions now if they're done with their presentations, yes.
So, thank you both for a great presentation, very detailed and easy to understand. So let me just understand, so this facility is your, the business model is for RVs to be driven onto this lot and basically parked?
Correct.
Okay. So, but when the business, when the RVs are parked, can your clients or customers, whatever they're called, if I'm coming back from Tahoe or whatever, and I've been in my RV for the past seven days, when I come back to this facility, can I do all my cleaning right there and leave it clean, dispose of my trash there, park it, and go home?
So the answer is no. And a couple of things, the letter that came from Storequest tonight, I think they described pretty well that the industry norm is for that not to happen. If you think about it, let's say I'm in my RV, and I can tell Councilmember Carr has a thought on this because he's an RV user, but if I'm in my RV and I drive with the kids to Disneyland or whatever, you know, I stay there, there's a facility for it, it's intended for that, I'm calling it an RV, I'm calling it an RV park, right? But it has hookups, they call it, and it has showers and whatever else. That's when you take care of that in the industry, in the RV world.
No, let me.
So not to park, it's a parking lot.
Okay, but that, I'm not saying that, I understand that the RV user is not going to come there to camp on this site. I'm saying, I'm coming back from Disneyland with the kids, I'm going straight to the facility, I'm going to clean out my RV, and then I'm going to drive home and leave my RV there. I'm asking, can that cleaning, can I clean up my RV on this site? That's not allowed.
No, it's not allowed, and it's not custom.
Okay.
And I would, yeah. It's not, I mean, it's not, that's not the RV world, basically.
Okay, so then there is no disposal of hazardous waste, of human waste, of anything like that?
That's not, for, that's not the use that we applied for.
Okay.
No, there would not be. Absent signs all over that say, hey, dump your waste here, which is the requirement that we're asking, the condition we're asking to be removed. So no, there wouldn't normally be that. So this condition imposes that entirely different scenario onto the business.
So I guess I've made clear I'm not a RV user myself. I mean, I've never, give me the Sheraton, you know what I mean? Like, for real, I'm at the Sheraton. But listen, so, because this is important, so.
Yes.
So you're saying that literally this business is to park the thing and walk away?
Right. And it's modern, the modern feature of having solar is very cool. You know, it sort of adds to the benefit, the environmental benefit of the facility. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay, so, because what I thought I heard in the presentation was that these trash containers are a municipal code requirement?
That is correct, and if I may address some of the questions, I'm not an RV user, I'll admit that myself as well. I'll be with you at the Sheraton.
There you go.
But as staff, we, when we look at these projects, our intent, as dark as this might sound sometimes, is to think of the worst-case scenario. Most RV users are going to do exactly as Councilmember Carr and Dana are alluding to, you clean it out and then you drop it off, right? But there are always a few of those actors that are going to have the garbage with them. The facility is not set up to deal with your water and sewer, of course not, that part wouldn't occur, but there is the possibility that you have some level of waste with you. And this being a commercial property, and per our municipal code, you must have a trash enclosure for that waste to go. Through the years that this project has taken, it had become evident to staff that access to that enclosure would be limited, and that is where this special condition comes from. It's a bit of a novel condition, we admit that, but it really came from a place of we wanted to ensure that if you were that bad user and you have all your trash with you, that you're not going to be dumping it on the site, you're not going to be throwing it out your window as you drive home, that you have access to this required trash enclosure.
So would we be in violation of the municipal code if we granted the request of this appeal in terms of the trash enclosures? request of this appeal in terms of the trash enclosures?
In terms of just the trash enclosure, yes.
We would be in violation of the municipal code?
Yes, for the trash enclosure itself, but not for the signage. I do want to make sure that that is clear for everyone.
So it is our greatest hope that you would choose two, but if you choose three, I think that's a great way to show that we are working together to advance what is a really good project for the city of Fairfield.
Okay, so I've just got one more question on the signage conditions. That is not required by the municipal code, is that right?
That is correct.
So this is more of a discretionary kind of.
Correct.
Imposing this requirement?
That is correct, and in your conditions packet, you'll notice that it's actually listed as special conditions. So with every development project and conditional use permit that comes across the city's desk, if you will, we have those discretion to add special conditions in order to meet findings of approval.
So it kind of makes sense that if this business is not, if this business is, does not comprise people cleaning out their RVs and, you know, dumping their trash before they go back home, why would we need signage to direct them to enclosures that they probably are not going to be using? Is that right?
Oh, it's absolutely, they won't, it's absolutely correct.
Okay.
And it's actually moves further the wrong direction, right? Because you encourage, you advise them that it's there, you encourage them to use it, it's just, it's contrary in all ways to the RV life.
I can support three, so.
Yeah, for, for, just background and of where staff came to this point, our concern was, let's say you're that bad actor, you've got all your waste with you, you go to the enclosure and you find that it's locked, and you don't actually have access to that enclosure, and you don't have access to any of the waste receptacles. What are you going to do with your garbage? Hopefully you take it home when you find the right place to put it, right? But if you've already come with all the waste and you weren't really supposed to, there's a pretty high chance you might just put it on the ground right next to that trash enclosure, or you might find the vacant lot, a parcel down and leave it there.
And, and you're saying that to say, that's why the signage requirement is required, that's why it's required to have the signage directing the client or customer to, this is where the trash bin is, throw it away here?
Sure, yes. The intent of the signage condition was just to let them know, here's an open trash enclosure, if you have trash, please place it here.
So Dana, how can the signage condition be modified to be more conducive to your business model?
Remove it.
Is there any other way to modify it?
No, not really, I mean.
Even to diminish the number of signages, or?
There's just the, no, no. The way to correct the major problem is to remove the signage condition. I think.
And that's just an expense thing?
No, it's all, it's a culture thing, it's a change-of-use thing. You are moving the use from a place to park your RV to a place to engage in the activities that are better done, or supposed to be done, and are done at a RV park or other facility with the facilities available.
But I mean, I'm thinking about a parking lot, right? Like, if I go to Jack London Square, I'm in the parking lot, that's a parking facility, but there's signage that says trash can right by the elevators. Absolutely.
Not in the city of Fairfield.
But in the city of Oakland, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just using that as an analogy. I mean, wouldn't you want, if they, if they have trash, wouldn't you want them to say, oh, that's where the trash can is?
No, because that, again, the use, it doesn't allow for, accommodate, or consider the notion that trash is going to come out of the RV and be left at the parking lot. That's not the, the use that we have applied for, right? So that, no, that, that model, that, what you're describing doesn't exist. It doesn't. The use that this condition creates is something entirely different. And so by changing the use, you're changing his business model, you're changing the requirements, potentially insurance, all kinds of things. And that is the reason why we sought to change the indemnification condition, because it does change liabilities and everything else. So, yeah, so no, the core to this, so that he can move forward with this great project, is to remove the signage condition.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Any other questions?
I might just have another note.
Okay, councilman.
If, I understand that if you had signage, people would use that signage, they would make it a point to change, let's go dump our trash when we go to drop off our thing, and, and, and I don't know of any facilities that currently do that, none that I've been to. Thank you.
Councilman Thompson, anything else?
No, I think, I think I've heard enough.
All right. Anything else, counsel?
I think, I think staff has just a touch more.
Staff, you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, counsel, thank you for allowing me speak. Corey Beavers, managing analyst who oversees the city's solid waste and recycling program. So just briefly, wanted to note, back on the municipal code, so under Municipal Code Section 9.220E, quote, "Each commercial industrial business owner shall be responsible for ensuring and demonstrating its compliance with the following requirements. E, prominently post and maintain one or more signs where recyclables and/or organic waste are collected and/or stored that set forth what materials are required to be sourced separate in addition to collection procedures for such materials."
Yeah, that's, that's a different signage requirement than what we're talking about. We're talking about the signs that invite the, the folks who are driving onto the site, hey, trash is over here. That's different than, here's recyclable, here's, and the, you know, the stuff that republic, the little, I want to say stickers, that we are now putting, and believe me, it's confusing for everyone, right?
Need a PhD to throw your trash away now, right?
I mean, as I think many of you know, I handled waste management land use issues for a long time, it's confusing to me, it honestly is. But that's, that, I'm not talking about the, here's your recycle, here's your organic waste, here's your very limited landfill. Yes, that's, I'm talking about, here's the signs that say, here's where you dump, you drop your waste.
So you're saying that you, this facility would be in compliance with the municipal code section that Mr. Beavers just read?
Yes.
Yes?
Mm-hmm.
May I ask how, if you don't have a trash enclosure that has the signs that are prominently posted and maintained, how would that be?
And that leads us back to the trash enclosure issue, which is different than the signage condition that we're asking to be imposed.
Following up, Section 9.230, litter. To facilitate proper disposal of litter by pedestrians and motorists, publicly patronized establishments and institutions shall provide empty and maintain adequate containers for such public deposits of solid waste generated by the public as a result of patronization of such establishments. I mean, I think it's kind of standard what we've done before, right? It's a pretty standard requirement for any business to have the ability for their tenants, customers.
With all due respect.
I don't know which word you want to use to say these people who are renting spaces from you, to have the ability to dispose of trash.
With all due respect, if that were the case, then how did six CUPs for very extensive usage get through without that, the signage requirement that is imposed on a use that is so far away from trash generation? So I appreciate that, but then this gets back to the issue of how it is arbitrarily applied to this particular project.
Response?
Thank you.
I don't know if it'd be arbitrarily applied, you know, I think this is somewhat novel, that most trash enclosures don't rise to this level of occasion. And how often do we have trash enclosures that come to city council as a whole? So I think a lot of our conditions were written kind of to, kind of, I don't want to say rebute, but a lot of these things did come up. We've mentioned that this was a long project, right? We had communications with the applicant over the entire course of this project, and a lot of these conditions were written to kind of maintain us meeting the requirements of our municipal code.
Anything else, counsel?
Please trust us. Please trust that the folks that are in the industry understand the obligations and the intent and the culture and everything else. Please trust, and I know you know that Storage Pro already has the storage facility, which is kind of a jewel in the area and demonstrative of what this organization is capable of. So please trust us, the right thing to do is to remove the signage conditions.
Thank you.
All right. I'm bringing it back to the council, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm ready to make a motion, I.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, do you want to close the public hearing first?
I'm going to close the public hearing. Councilman Thompson?
You know, this is tough, and we don't like to go in staff, I know you guys worked hard on this, and I know that there's obviously some differences here. I would make a motion for alternative three, and that would be my motion.
Is there?
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
So remove the signage conditions, which are not required by the municipal code, and the trash enclosures, which are required by the municipal code, remain, and the indemnification conditions remain. I can vote for that.
Correct. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's approved unanimously.
And great job, everyone, in presenting, really well done.
This is going to have to come back to us, yeah.
And Madam Mayor, if I may suggest, just as a matter of procedure.
Yes.
Completely up to you, counsel, in what direction you want to give staff, but my recommendation, just to make sure everyone is clear, I would make your direction clear, it sounds like what you've all approved is alternative number three, so I would direct staff to come up with number three and get consent from both parties right now, that it can come back on consent calendar and that, and that the appellant does not need to be present, and have them waive their appearance here, just so we know that they're not expected to be here.
Are you willing to do that, counsel?
Well, you can come if you want, but if you're not here, that they can approve it without you being here.
It won't stop anything.
Okay.
I can elaborate a little on what alternative three, or what we had in mind for alternative three. In your packet, there is the city council conditions of approval. Special condition 1.1CI states signage identif, or sorry, that's the wrong one, 1.1C2, signage stating tenants slash customers have access to trash receptacles and carts for disposal of minor waste and debris. So under alternative three, we would be deleting that line entirely. And then, special condition 1.1C says, following waste management signage shall be posted on-site, final design, verbiage, and placement location shall be subject to the review and approval of the Public Works Department. So we would be altering the second half of that condition so that there would not be any review and approval of the Public Works Department. However, what I will say is, the signage regarding the source-separated recyclables, organics, and garbage would have to remain, it is consistent with our municipal code, I don't believe the appellant is interested in removing that. And typically, we would have Public Works's final review and approval of that signage. So the condition is kind of interlaced with that source-separated.
Counsel, is that acceptable?
So the condition.
Come to the mic, please.
Potentially would be, waste management signage shall be posted on-site for source-separated recyclables, organics, and garbage, per Municipal Code Section 9.220, final design, verbiage, and placement shall be subject to the review and approval of the Public Works Department. So our Public Works Department would have review and approval of the source-separated signage.
So before we go any further, let me just say, we don't need to draft the, the thing here. Just, we don't, we don't need to do that. I think that Mr. Lim recommended that we do what, whatever changes we're going to make, and then make sure that it's, there is a consensus with, between everyone, but we don't need to write that here.
Just prior to returning.
I appreciate that, actually, and you have already voted, so it's a little.
Yeah, we're done.
Yeah, great. I just want to make sure that whatever we edit is the right information bringing back.
Thank you, Beale.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, all of you. And by the way, this is the closest I ever stand to a governing body on all of the places I go.
So how do you like that?
Very close.
You're welcome.
It's very close.
All righty, we're going to go ahead and adjourn to Tuesday, March 7th, 6:00 PM in the council chamber. See you all then.